This, this, yeah, this.
But you're.
We're in full.
Yes.
So all these awards, we got the Phoenix Award, that's probably nice to know. That's all.
The chairman was climbing the ladder and all of a sudden twisted something.
That's all it takes.
Oh my gosh.
Seems funny to see so many people here.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought some time. Something done. Of the salve. Of the stream. Both of them are dark.
Okay.
You have no idea.
Yeah, last night we were the dogs was a little bit.
I'm glad that, in a way, I'm glad they're all.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for coming. Like to call our regular board meeting Monday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. Please rise. Chairman Chitwick.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for seven firefighters in the U.S. that lost their lives this past month in the month of June, and then be followed by a prayer. Dear God, we come and give honor to those who serve so faithfully and so lovingly, and, Lord, those that have given their lives as an ultimate sacrifice, we thank you for them, and we pray that you'll be with their families, strengthen them, and encourage them in a time of loss, but thank you for their service. Lord, we pray for protection for the firefighters here in Bonita and the surrounding areas, that you might always watch over them, keep them safe, keep their families safe. Just thank you for the privilege we have of gathering together and the freedom that we have, and for those that fought and defended each and every day. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there any public comment on agenda items this evening? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the July tenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to do July twenty twenty-three and current expenditures and ACH payments, acknowledgement of financial report, and acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then POs over ten thousand dollars, they're all listed there. I need a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, before you take the vote, I do have one to add for floor meister to redo the floors for in here, the AV room and the small training room, total of thirteen thousand sixty-six dollars and sixty-four cents.
Is that budgeted?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so with that addendum to that, we've got, I think we got a second, didn't we?
We did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner's business.
Disposals.
Disposals.
Did I miss the disposals? No, they're down further.
Okay.
I do have some commissioner business.
You got the floor.
I was lucky enough in order to spend many of my winners in line. My thoughts are perish of those people. Thank you.
Absolutely. Do you have anything, sir? I've got something quick. I'd just like to thank the chief and the firemen and women. My child started school, and it was really nice to have the firemen there, and they were helping slow down cars. As a parent, that's really important. That was nice of the fire district to do. I didn't know we even did that, so thank you. And that's it. Thank you. Well, that goes from all of us. We always appreciate y'all. You have something?
Yes, sir. Chief, I just want to make sure we're all set for nine eleven.
Yep, September eleventh, all good to go. We have our guest speaker coming down. Thank you to Commissioner Slacka and his family. She's coming down, staying here locally, staying for three or four days, and it's on my list, but I might as well hit it right now, is just don't forget about it, September eleventh at Station One at five thirty. We're putting it out to all the other fire districts and the fire stations and all the cities around us.
And Chief, I hope it's okay with you, but I asked the chairman here if he would introduce the speaker.
Yes, that's no problem whatsoever.
Great.
Okay, well, now comes the best part of the meeting, the presentations.
Presentations. Tonight, we have a Phoenix Award, which is always something good to have. I'll turn it over to Captain Wilson. Okay. I'll turn it over to Colin Boston, who can do a different one. Threw him underneath the bus today. So every year since we've had Paul Phillips, our train officer, who passed away and who, you know, really revamped our training division. And so every time that we have a recruit class, they always named, you know, the top guy, the guy that stands out of the whole class. So tonight, I'm going to have Captain Boston and Captain Wilson announce who this past, when we hired these last five back in March, who our top candidate was. So I'll turn it over to Captain Boston.
Good evening. So tonight, I have the privilege of presenting the Paul Phillips Award. This award is something that's kind of near and dear to my heart. As most of you know, Paul had a tremendous impact on the fire service here in Bonita, but not only here in Bonita, all across the county. I probably wouldn't be working for this department if it wasn't for Paul. So he was a mentor of mine, as he was for, I'm sure, quite a few people. So after Paul passed, we wanted a way to keep his memory alive, and not just of a way to, you know, talk about it, something that had meaning behind it. So the chiefs and everybody came up with, we established the Paul Phillips Award. So it's presented to the person who finishes at the top of their new hire orientation class, someone that exhibits qualities similar to Paul. Some of the words that come to mind are passionate, caring, hardworking, inspiring, and motivating. So tonight, the Paul Phillips Award goes to Tyler Best. Tyler showed all these qualities and more. Tyler showed all these qualities and more throughout his orientation. Tyler came with experience, and as chief likes to say, we stole him from the city Naples Fire Department.
Good job.
His peers looked to him as a leader and someone they could rely on constantly throughout his orientation. And I, along with Captain Wilson, you know, have faith that he will continue to show these qualities, and that he'll, you know, have a successful career here. So with that being said, the Paul Phillips Award goes to Tyler Best.
Good evening. It is with great pride to stand before you to present a Phoenix Award to a few individuals here tonight. A Phoenix Award is an award given to those who have demonstrated exceptional courage and skill in saving a life during critical situations. This award symbolizes their dedication and unwavering commitment to preserving and safeguarding human life. In a moment when every second mattered, they demonstrated exceptional skill, resilience, and compassion, embodying the spirit of the phoenix rising from the ashes. On March twenty-sixth, Lieutenant Paramedic Joe Sanderson, firefighter, paramedic trainee Bobby Cruz, firefighter EMT Rob Schmidt on Engine Twenty-Five, and paramedic Stan Ball, paramedic Jason Marchand, and EMT Aaron Larva with Lee County EMS responded to a cardiac arrest. On arrival, they found a fifty-nine-year-old male laying on the floor in the kitchen who was receiving chest compressions by two family members. As Engine Twenty-Five's crew and Lee County EMS took over care, they confirmed the patient was in cardiac arrest and assumed chest compressions and began advanced life-saving interventions. One of those interventions included early defibrillation to convert a lethal cardiac rhythm to a normal rhythm. After four defibrillations, the patient regained a pulse. He started to breathe on his own, and when the patient was packaged and moved to the ambulance, his airway had to be removed. He started talking as actually stating his name. Today, Mr. Bruno Belaventz is alive and well, but unfortunately can't be here tonight. However, he did send a small video to share.
Hello, everyone. I hope you can hear the genuine gratitude in my voice as I speak to you today. My name is Bruno Belaventz. I'm from Quebec, and my English isn't the best, so I ask my few to translate this short text. I stand before you thanks to the incredible effort of some truly remarkable individuals. I want to take this moment to express my deep appreciation to the heroes who saved my life during a life-changing event. As many of you know, a little while ago, I experienced a sudden heart attack, heart attack, while I was visiting my cousin in Bonita Springs. I was visiting the beautiful state, enjoying some well-deserved time off, when fate had a different plan for me that day. The brave and skilled firefighter aboard the spring responds swiftly to the emergency call. Their professionalism, courage, and rapid, and rapid response played in a crucial, a crucial, a crucial role in keeping me alive. They put their life on the line to ensure mine, and for that, I am eternally grateful. Their expertise and timely action bought me precious moment until further medical assistance could be provided. But that's not where the story ends. Fate had another angel in store for me, my dear cousin, Jack. When I went down during the heart attack, Jack was there right beside me. Without hesitation, he took matter into his own hands, providing constant cardiac message. His determination and unwavering focus were absolutely crucial during those critical moments. The medical professionals at the American Hospital where I was taken also deserved my sincerity. Their expertise, education, and care ensure I received the treatment I need during my time in the U.S. In conclusion, I want to express my deepest appreciation to you, to my cousin Jack, and all the people who played a part in giving me a second chance. I will forever grateful for the kindness, dedication, and heroism during display by each of you. Life is precious, and it's time, and it's moment like these that remind us of the value of every heartbeat. To everyone out here today, please cherish the moment you have with your loved one and take care of your health. I learned, I learned first hand how important it is to act skilled and compassionate individual by your side in time of need. Thank you all for your unwavering support, love, and prayer to this journey. My heart overflowed with gratitude for the overwhelming kindness and I have received from friends, family, and even stranger. May we all continue to celebrate life together, knowing that kindness and heroism are always within our reach. Again, I want to say a very big thanks, a very big thank you to the team of EMS in Bonita Springs. Well, I can thank you for everything. Sorry for my English. I try, I try to listen. I try, I try to do my best.
Very nice.
All right, so we'd like to call up Lieutenant Paramedic FTO, Joe Sanderson. Firefighter, paramedic, trainee Bobby Cruz. Firefighter EMT Rob Schmidt. And we have one of the EMS individuals here, EMT Aaron Larva.
We're going to take a five-minute recess. If anybody would like to leave the meeting now, you're welcome to stay, but I know I see a lot of families here that probably would have something better to do right now. Congratulations to all, and thank you all so much for coming. Thank you. Oh, my God. We good?
Good.
Called the meeting back to order. Next item, we need a motion for the disposals report.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All business? Anybody have any?
Yes, sir. If no one else does. I wanted to ask the chief and the assistant deputy chief about the heat, how our men and women have been faring. It's all over the news if you walk outside. Are we still following the guidelines? Still following the guideline? Again, the battalion chiefs all have it on their phone where if it's over one hundred and ten feels like with the heat index, we stop training, all outside training. We do have an acquired structure next door at the old Fleischer place, and we have ice baths over there, starting tomorrow, that if anybody gets overheated, we have the proper, we have the proper things in place to where to cool them down rapidly. Awesome. So we've got everything, and then VCs and training still all, all have liquid IVs on their, on the rigs, and plus, we've added it to the assistant chief, deputy chiefs, and myself, so if we roll up on a call with them and the battalion chief happens to be somewhere else or delayed, we at least have the, to get the crews also. That's awesome. Have you guys have any, had any trouble with any of, at any of the calls? We haven't had any, anybody, any of our crews go down. Was listening to a brush fire today, Pine Island did have one of their firefighters go down there, were at a brush fire for, I don't know, three, four hours.
Yeah, that'd be brutal.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know how they do it with, with the bunker gear.
So, and you know, we've changed a little bit of the way we do things because of the heat right now, so let's, we typically, when we have drivers training, like a guy, one of our crew members getting signed off to be a driver engineer, usually the crews are in full bunker gear, pulling lines and doing that. We've reduced it down now to helmet, gloves, and pants, so we've reduced that, that exposure. It sounds like you got a hand on it. Thank you, sir.
I have my monthly question about TECO. How do you, how do you work?
No, I've got a fueler out to, and I don't know if I explained this last month, I don't think I did, only for the fact that I found out about it in my meeting that I had down in Naples, the eighteenth through the twenty-second. I sit on the liaison for Florida Fire Chiefs through the State of Florida's hazmat team, or State of, State of Florida's hazmat symposium group. So I was at the meeting, their, their yearly meeting, business meeting, and it got brought up, and Gainesville is having the same issue, that the TECO in Gainesville has no idea where their valves are, and he expressed to me that that's common statewide, that they don't know where their shut-off valves are.
It doesn't mean that it's right.
I, I know that, but they're, they're dealing with the same issue we are and trying to find it out on a state level now.
So seeing how you're a liaison to this group, then maybe you could be part of pushing this. I think we need to, you know, hold TECO's feet to the fire.
To the gas fire.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think it's absolutely ridiculous.
So I, we brought it up to the state, September the third, or seventh and eighth, there is a battery class up at the state fire college, and we're going to talk about it.
So, okay, so it's.
It's on, it's on the radar of everybody in the state now.
Um, is there anybody that we need to talk to as elected people from TECO, or is this better staying at your level until we get to a point?
Let's leave it at our level until we can't.
All right.
Till it starts falling on deaf ears, and they're like, giving us the brush off.
This is like us not knowing where our fire trucks are.
Well, I, it's.
Or not knowing where the hydrants are.
Yeah.
It's just mind-boggling to me, but, and it doesn't take much, as we all know, for something to go horribly wrong. So, thank you for that update. Anybody else have anything? New business, we need a motion to approve the budget transfer, three budget transfers.
No, budget transfer.
Budget transfer, three. I numbered it.
So moved. Lisa never correct the chairman. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, chief, you got the floor.
So, it brings me great pleasure, twenty-seven is open. Station twenty-seven is open. We moved in last Monday. They slept there Monday night, no ghosts come and got them, no zombies come and got them, they made it through the night, and they're still there today. The boat is back operational, on the lift, responding to calls. We've, until the fuel situation gets rectified down there, which we have bids coming back and forth of that right now, until that gets rectified, I've opened an account with Bonita Bay Marina, that would be the closest place to get fuel, and they will bill us, you know, on a monthly basis. So we do have a place to get fuel, we don't have to pull the boat out and take it to racetrack or wherever we can get off-road or ethanol-free, so Bonita Bay has that. So it is still a work in progress, there's still some work getting done down there, but we are able to move in there. We're still getting like the gym equipment you'll see out front, we have gym equipment that's just came in today, but it is livable, they have all the amenities that everybody, the cameras are up, AC, cable, computers, mattresses, everything. The only thing they, I don't think that they don't have would be the gym equipment right now and some other, a clock or whatever it may be, incidental things that, that we are either A, waiting on order, or B, didn't get at the time, like a clock, we forgot to get a clock, you know. So little things like that, but they know that we're to go get them, and they know the stuff's on order. So any questions about Station twenty-seven? Tiki is up and running, everything got fixed on it.
Nice job.
Chief, do they have an opportunity to work out somewhere else while they're on duty?
Yes, they can go down to Station Two, we've, even before, if you remember when we originally got into Station twenty-seven, there was no gym, we didn't have the facility, so they would rotate and go down to Station Two and work out. And actually, Sea Isle's condominium was nice enough to let them play on the tennis courts. Obviously, that's not a option right now, since they don't have a tennis court, but they do have the opportunity to go to Station Two and work out.
Thank you.
Nice work.
Yep.
So, it's good, it's good to be in. Next on my list is, we are still in the midst of budget preparation, everything's going good. You know, we hear one good thing, then we hear one bad thing, so it's, it's one of those things, in case you haven't followed, the State of Florida did budget, I think, thirty-five million dollars to pay back special district cities who may have a shortfall. We are going to apply for that this year, which is in the neighborhood of three hundred and some odd, three hundred and five thousand dollars, tax collector and.
Is that over and above the FEMA money?
Yeah, this is totally something totally separate.
Yeah, I thought so, I just wanted to clarify that.
So, yeah, it's, it's different, it's different than the resilient lead at the one-point-one billion, this is something else that the state has done and put thirty-five million, so we have to wait for the tax collector to give us a Form five zero zero three, and we can submit the five zero zero four to the state after September first, before October first. So, yeah, it's.
Once you do that, though, the money should come quickly, right?
It should. It should.
Not like FEMA.
And I'll give you, and it's from the State of Florida, and I'll give you a good example of that, that we received Friday a check for twenty-four thousand dollars and some change for when we went and stood by at Fort Myers Beach with the USAR team and our backfill, we received a check for that Friday of twenty-four thousand dollars. So, you know, less than a year later, we got that money. So I would venture a guess that when we apply, and if it gets approved, which I don't see why it wouldn't get approved, we'll get it before June first of next year, because they have to, either they have to use the money, or they have to reallocate it for the following year, and I don't know why they would reallocate it, because it can be used and it can be paid out. So our next meeting with you is the final budget workshop before the, the hearings is August twenty-ninth at three P.M. in this room. The next thing I have on my list is chamber event. They have changed it, it was supposed to be this Wednesday at Riptide, they have changed it now, it is August thirtieth on a Thursday at Riptide Brewing. So, we got some time? If you want to go, just let Anna Marie know that. Also, if you notice in the agenda, the performance review was completed and submitted to the Attorney General, for those of you that may not remember about it, two years ago, the state legislature, probably politically incorrect, but we're picking on special districts, us being one of them with the fire districts, mosquito control.
It's another unfunded mandate.
Another unfunded mandate that they have said that they want done, so we had till October first or June thirty, June first to submit it. We missed that deadline because of the hurricane, they said any district that was infected by hurricane in within fifty-mile radius, we, we got us, we could submit it whenever. Our group submitted it a month ago, at the end of June, so we missed it by thirty days. It has been submitted, so we're just waiting and seeing, we're hoping through the Florida Association of Special Districts, the Florida Fire Chiefs Association, and the League of Counties and League of Cities, we can get this done with this year, be a one-and-done. If not, we have to do it again in five years. And basically, what you're doing is you're, we've set down our own perimeters, like, parameters, like, the board wants us everywhere in Bonita Springs within four to six minutes, ninety percent of the time. That's one of our goals. So this company comes in and says, are you meeting those goals, these perimeters that you've set for? So they've done all that, they've come in and entered. They've come in and entered, or we gave them all the numbers from the CAD system, from dispatch, from our training, from prevention and inspections, the public education specialists, all those things.
Fitch did a great job on it. I think it was like 29 pages or something, if I'm not mistaken. But they did a really good job on it.
So now with that, we are still waiting on our standards of coverage of, AKA, a facilities report. That is due by the end of this fiscal year, so we should be meeting with them and getting a, I guess you'd call it a draft proposal in the next couple of weeks. So that's with the performance review. Next thing I have on our, just a reminder, just a reminder that next month's meeting, since we have September 11th on Monday, the 11th, our meeting is moved to September 12th. So our next meeting will be September 12th at, you know, 5:00 like before. Obviously, I'll remind everybody on the 29th that it is that day on our budget workshop.
And the 11th is 5:30.
11 is 5:30, September 11th is 5:30. The big thing about the September 12th is that's the first budget hearing also. So that's where we'll accept the budget.
We all got to make sure we're here for that one.
Yeah, we need at least three. Otherwise, bad things can happen.
We don't want that.
No, we don't want that. Lastly, last thing, myself, Chairman Lohan, Assistant Chief Broad, and Deputy Chief Schmidt all met with TCG, it's a realty group. They come highly recommended. They do a lot of commercial work here. They do work for the school board. If you, you know, since we started, they helped us in the beginning. When we went to buy Station 7, or Station 27, a year ago, they came by, friends of people in church recommended them, and they came by and like helped us out. They did a, you know, I guess you could call it a market analysis to see, are we getting our money's worth for this? And they did, so we met with them.
And they didn't charge us for that?
No, they didn't charge us for any of this. It was, like I said, they are very respectable. Like I said, they do work for school board. They do work for a bunch of cities. They do work for City of Astera.
They're very impressive outfit, extremely so.
With that being said, they have given us a proposal to deal with them. We have it at the lawyers right now because we want to make sure we're, make sure all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. They feel that the property is worth in the neighborhood of $6 million, if not more, so we'll definitely get our, they are proposing we get our money back again, but the market will bear that. So what I'm looking for tonight is an approval for you guys as long as the lawyers have no problem with it, or whatever the lawyers have a problem with, if it is fixed, to go ahead and enter into this agreement with TCG Group.
We need a motion for that.
I'd like to have a motion for it and discussion.
Anybody want a second?
I'll see.
Anybody want to talk about it?
I do. Before the consideration of the award, I would ask that the firm give us their best and final offer on the sales commission percentage. It's a standard 6%, and I believe that this is something they may be able to do better on. Someone else may be better to do on, but I'd like that under consideration before we make a final commitment.
So this motion's going to die?
No, it was a motion to second. That was a comment.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying.
But if the motion's approved, we're going with them, is what he's saying.
Okay.
So if I can say, so the way it sounds, you're okay with the motion, but you want us to at least go back to the drawing board one more time and try and get a better percentage other than 6%?
Would it be best if I made an amendment to the motion?
It sounds like he wants us to look at other people.
Not necessarily look at other people, but ask them to give their best and final offer on the percentage they're asking us to take.
What is it, 6? It's pretty standard.
It is standard.
Matter of fact, for commercial, a lot of it's 10.
I mean, I? Do you need a separate motion?
No, I mean?
Because this, we have a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, so we either A, a friendly amendment to the motion, or discussion, whichever one you want to do, Commissioner. If you want to amend the motion to say that you want something lower than 6, or don't sign it, or do you just want to make the comment you would like myself and the chairman to go back and say, is this your best and final offer? Can we do better on the percentage? And if they say yes, great. If they say no, 6 is where we're at. I guess my question would be, are we still authorized to sign at that point?
I would like you to do that, and I guess it would take a motion to table until that is accomplished.
That will delay it for another month before they start actively promoting it.
Right, and we've had the property since January, and this could be a significant amount of money if they're willing to cooperate.
You know, it's a pretty well-known fact that we got three realtors in my area, they never charged 6%.
Well, to argue the other side of that, not that we owe them anything, but they did a significant amount of work for us when we first went through this, and they didn't charge us a penny. And I almost feel it's the fact that they're not gouging us, and if you look at the proposal that they put together and the work they're going to put in with the drones and the aerial and how they're going to market this, I'm not sure that 100% I feel comfortable with asking them to table.
Before we go any further, I've made a motion to table, and I need to know if there's a second.
Well?
Motion dies.
Motion dies. We've got, all in favor of accepting this proposal?
Aye.
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 No.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Okay, nice job. Thank you. We've got all the other deputies and fire marshal reports in there. If anybody has any questions on those, nice job. If not, you're up, Alex.
On the hazmat, a couple comments. One, there was an article in Trains Magazine. I'm giving the deputy chief and the chief a copy. But anyway, basically, there were five train cars that were, had vinyl chloride on there, and that was a big problem. And that could have caused the deaths of the animals, et cetera. And anyway, I'll give you that. The next item is pool chlorine. I don't know how many pool chlorine plants we have, but there was an incident reported in the American Chemical Society, which I remember, July 17th, about the Chemical Safety Board, which is a federal situation. And there was apparently a chlorine dryer thing. I'm not sure. You've got, I'll give you the article, and I don't know what the procedures are, if this affects anything in Lee or Collier Counties, but if it does, I think you guys ought to know something, you know, you ought to pass this information to them. Okay, that was the two items. And the other item, what concerns me, and concerns you, the chairman, about the TECO gas. We don't have, we had, I remember years ago, we had an accident out. I was out. This was under Chief Gorley on US 41, and I responded to that, and I don't know if you responded to that or not, but anyway, that was a mess. And I'm surprised, shocked, shall I say, that there isn't, should have, louts. What on earth?
They got them, they don't know where they are.
They have them?
Yeah.
And they don't know where they are?
That's what my beef is.
What?
Yeah, there it is. It's out there.
I'm speechless.
It's his fault.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Please.